The stream is up.
Okay, and I guess the attendees who are on the Zoom will start, it'll start populating.
They're starting to come in now.
Oh, I see that now. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start with items to be removed from consent agenda. If a board member wishes to remove an item on the consent agenda for further discussion, a motion to remove item from the consent agenda must be made. However, once a motion and second are made for the consent agenda items listed below, simple questions can be asked regarding any of them as you would normally do for individual resolutions. Consent agenda, item A, approval of minutes of the 2/23/21 board meeting and the 2/23/21 special meeting. Item B, personnel actions. Item C, approval of vendor agreements and amendments. D, approval of health service agreements and amendments. E, approval of budget transfer. F, acceptance of arrangements for appropriate special programs and services as recommended by CSE, CPSC. And G, authorization to declare certain items obsolete or relocated. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second.
Second, Ariana.
Any questions on anything on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I'm just, I'm gonna go to resolutions and I'll turn to Bob for a couple of comments. Resolution A, resolution to approve an agreement with the STEM Alliance of Larchmont-Mamarinack. Recommended action that the Board of Education approves the agreement with the STEM Alliance of Larchmont-Mamarinack, Inc. For running the co-op summer enrichment program. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second.
Second.
Bob, do you want to speak to this? I know the board's received a few questions regarding the contracted amount and how that's broken down for co-op camp.
Sure, so we have now for several years partnered with the STEM Alliance, Meg Coifer and the STEM Alliance, to provide for the summer co-op camp program which has historical roots as an enrichment program in the district. We normally asked the board to consider this contract back in January of the year, given the time, this is a summer program, the time for developing the plan, the program, as well as the hiring and advertising for interested students and families. Given the uncertainty about the public health crisis, not knowing, so we are kind of behind the eight ball, but typically, per the agreement, this is annually reviewed and considered. The program provides, I think, a 25, 26 day experience in July and August for approximately 230 students K5, this year we're going to case, excuse me, first grade through grade six. This, as you know, this summer we'll have a lot of capital work across the district and so we've actually, based on the board's approval, we'll plan to conduct this program at the Hummels Middle School. In the past, when we've had capital projects, we've shifted location as well. This contract, given that the extreme costs for transportation, busing, will not be part of this experience. The program is essentially, in terms of the budget, is really divided into three parts. The actual program implementation, the camp program from July through August, reflects $175,000 in budgetary funds. That is approximately per student per day, about $30 per student. However, the 175 does not take into consideration that both the town of Mamarinack, the village of Mamarinack contribute, I think, close to $20,000 or $25,000 to this program. So it really is a collaborative effort to fund this program and so it reduces the program implementation down to 150, 145,000. In the contract, we've separated also, because this goes over the cycle of the fiscal year, money for startup and money for program development. So the total combined budget cost of the co-op is 225,000 minus what I would say is the revenue that we receive from the village and the town. But the program cost, actually to deliver the staffing experience is 175 less the contributions for the towns and villages.
Thanks, Bob. And so the other 225 is because it straddles two budget years. So it's not 225 for running the program in one year. It's allocated over a couple of budgetary years.
Right, but if you keep doing it each year, it comes out to the 225 a year.
Right, right.
And that amount has been constant. That is, you know, since we revamped the program several years ago, we've agreed to a set amount per student participating.
Great. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Well, some little voice wants to approve it also. B, resolution to execute an agreement between the Mamarinack Union Free School District and the Artsley Union Free School District. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations to execute the attached agreement between the Mamarinack Union Free School District and the Artsley Union Free School District for transportation management effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second.
Second, Gladys.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Side. Side letter of agreement between the Mamarinack Union Free School District and the Mamarinack, I almost had it, non-teaching custodial unit. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute a side letter agreement between the Mamarinack Union Free School District and the, it's always the second one, and the Mamarinack Non-Teaching Custodial Unit Regarding Retirement Incentive. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second.
Second, Christian.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Rena. Rena, one sec. Bob, do you want to just mention about the contract and what happens if the budget doesn't pass for STEM Alliance? I realize people ask about.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that reminder. Yeah, I mean, because this program approval and the contract happens prior to the adoption of the budget and the vote. Within the contract, there's a common agreement in language that this, the entire program each year is contingent upon passage of the budget and if the budget were to be voted down, reconsideration in that time period of a contingent budget that the program would be set aside. So thank you for reminding me, Sam, that, so we always are planning for the program. Similarly, last year when we were uncertain about whether the health conditions would allow even for in-person program, that it's contingent upon passage of the budget. So thank you.
Yeah, I actually have the exact language here. That it's expressly contingent upon budgetary constraints, including voter approval of the school district's annual 2021, 2022 school budget.
That's just to acknowledge and recognize that if we needed to revise the budget, we need to have the opportunity to eliminate programs that are non-mandated and this is a non-mandated program.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Bob, over to you.
Thank you, Rena. I just want to mention, prior to this transition to presentations, that tomorrow I plan to just update parents and community members and staff on our progress in planning for the transition of students K through 12 back full-time to in-person learning. Our administrative team have been working really around the clock to really assess feasibility, to determine staffing needs and begin to hire or seek to hire appropriate staffing to support our plan and then really wrestling with staffing assignments. And so, and finally, working to revise safety protocols as we anticipate what that full-day experience would look like. So I just want to point out, I've been receiving a number of emails on questions about where we're at, so I hope to at least give a progress report. As I mentioned, the PT Council during the week, each day we learn more, you know, we kind of take a step forward. And so I plan to just provide an update in advance of Monday's parent forum where we'll speak in details to the status of the timelines of our plans. I hope tomorrow just to present general timelines in terms of dates, where our targets that we're considering, but making sure that people understand these are tentative timelines and tentative dates based on all the moving parts to our plan.
Thanks for that, Bob. And there will also be, we know that people will have a lot of questions. We're not going to be able to answer those this evening. There is going to be a space on the communication for submitting your questions. Then there is also the March 8 meeting and I anticipate that the building principals may be having meetings following that, but I'm not 100% sure about that, so.
Okay, are we ready to move on to presentation?
We are ready to move on to presentation.
With that, I'm going to ask in a moment Assistant Superintendent for Kirk of Instruction Aunt Missany Ward to provide the board and committee with update on reading data, reading progress, mid-year report. I had the pleasure on last Friday of participating in the presentation with our elementary teachers and I felt, given our commitment to, what I would say, formative assessment, to really looking at academic progress, this was an opportunity to provide additional information to parents and to the board and the community. So Annie, thank you for that.
Sure, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. So as Bob mentioned, this presentation, the data that I'm gonna share right now, picks up where I think we left off with the public conversation in mid-December. At that time, I had an opportunity to share with you the fall data, you know, where we, as per our reopening plan, assessed all children in reading, writing, and math across all four elementary schools and got that baseline information about how they had fared between school closing in January. That would have been the last formal assessment measure. Of course, we continued to assess students and report that individually to parents through the spring. But the fall, once we reopened in our hybrid and remote model, that was our first chance to really welcome kids back, get those safety protocols up and running, attend their social and emotional learning, of course, and just make sure everyone felt safe and comfortable and ready to learn, which was just a monumental effort on the part of really everyone across the system. But then the business of September and October really turned to those preliminary assessments and we reported on those data, so I'm now going to catch you up now that we've had the opportunity mid-year as we would in a normal year. Of course, this year is anything but that, but we did move ahead and conduct those mid-year assessments. So what I'm gonna be showing you is essentially progress over time from the fall till now, knowing that we have many weeks and, in fact, months of school left yet. So let me just begin to share my screen. Okay, let me just move my... There we go. Okay, so mid-year elementary reading data. So what I am reporting tonight are the results across all four elementary schools. There may certainly be additional conversations that'll take place at the building level, but what I'm sharing right now are going to be district-wide data, disaggregated in various ways, as you'll see in a moment. So with the teachers, you know, Bob mentioned that it was really a wonderful moment on Friday to come together by Zoom, you know, ordinarily it would have been an in-person meeting, but of course, we gathered as we customarily do now electronically. And I opened with this tweet from Jess Keating, who's very familiar children's author. Her books are in many of our classrooms across the system. And here's something that Jess had to say about reading in the pandemic. I know we talk a lot about books being windows and doors, but this pandemic has also shown us that books can be shelters. Sometimes you just need to live between covers for a while and I'm really glad to be in a business that creates that necessary space for people. So, you know, we're gonna be talking about data points, but it's really important to remember the ways kids are really growing and learning about the world and developing empathy and all the other wonderful outcomes that reading proficiency brings. And of course, that's really what we're most concerned with. So as I just mentioned, when we reopened, these were our priorities. And right after physical safety and social emotional well-being was this idea that we were going to spend a lot of time assessing each kid's progress and then using those data to really plan targeted and responsive instruction. There's Alison Ivler, teacher at MAS on one of the early days of school. You can see she's doing a read aloud for her class there, holding up the book, figuring out all those routines to her students on Zoom. So just to summarize where we were in October, there's Emily Macias, Literacy Specialist at MAS. Again, early on in the year and you can see the plexiglass barrier there maybe between her and that student, but a very warm, friendly environment where Emily is conducting a running record. And that really is the data that I'm gonna be sharing with you tonight. We assess students' independent reading levels via a variety of tools, but the basis is a running record, which is an oral record of a child's reading, actual reading behavior that enables us to determine what that child's independent reading level is. So what I'm showing you here is the snapshot of October to October. So this is pre-COVID October 2019 proficiency being compared to October 20, you know, the return to school during COVID. And these data are showing the students for whom we had both of those scores. So you'll see current kindergarteners are not in here because we don't have fall reading levels for them in the first place, nor were those students here last spring. So this is an apple-to-apple, so to speak, comparison of the same students that were here pre-COVID, what their proficiency levels were last October and what they were this past October during COVID. And so what was concerning but not surprising to us is that if you go all the way over to the right-hand column, you're seeing something labeled Delta and what that is, is the difference. So the difference from October 19 to October 20 in terms of proficiency. So you can see, highlighted in purple, that when we reopened and completed the first round of assessments in October 20, we had a net increase of 11% of our students who were not yet at proficiency, the six plus the five. So you could think of that as our, you know, our COVID slide, so to speak, that we had 11% more kids not proficient in October than had been the case the previous year before COVID. Now, when we disaggregate, so this is now a subset of that same information that you just saw, but here we're disaggregating by race. And so what we see here is that within that 11% that I just showed you, we had an increase of 6% of white students not yet at proficiency. So a fairly mild slide. And then for students of color, the increase was much larger, was 20%. So those were certainly concerning data when we think through the lens of the district's commitment to equitable access for all kids, literacy being such an important, vital gateway to so many other things. When we disaggregate for poverty, again, we're very aware of the access issues that many of our students in low-income homes have had to learning, whether that's to physical books or to the tech tools and Wi-Fi access that they will need in order to access our programs. So here we see again, for students not in poverty, what that COVID slide looked like was an increase of 7% of kids not yet at proficiency in October. But take a look here, an increase for students in poverty. And I have to say, this is in spite of such monumental efforts on the part of so many to really bridge that access piece of 32%. So when we talk about system challenges, you will continue to hear us talk about students in low-income homes and our need to really ensure that they have equitable access to learning. So that was the opening snapshot.
Annie?
Yep.
Just a question there. So the first slide demonstrated 20% slide in regards to reading proficiency for students of color. And then the second slide kind of opens up the field more to students that are living in poverty now.
That's right, Christian. And there is definitely intersectionality. So, meaning, and I don't know if this is where your question is going, but yes. So one of the other things, and you heard us report on this, I think, back in the fall. We were aware, for example, that students in poverty, and actually you'll see this coming up again, were overrepresented among the ranks of our remote learners. So we were very concerned about that, right? The very students who might have not yet the most robust access to technology were in larger measure learning remotely than students who might be coming from more well-resourced homes. So there are some students who are both of color and living in poverty, some white students living in poverty. So there's definitely intersectionality here and at the building level and of course, behind the scenes, as we really dig into the data, we're looking at all of those patterns and trends. And a few of them I'm gonna share with you tonight that are fairly interesting.
Thank you.
So that was the fall snapshot. And now in those weeks of school, here you see Jana Masella at Chatsworth. She is convening a guided reading group, which was, again, what so many of you who, we did a session in the fall about literacy footprints and guided reading. So this is just a regular day of the week where Jana is doing precisely what we had hoped to equip teachers to do, which is she's convened a group of students with like needs. You can see that four-way divider there, so the kids are separated, not only masked and have the barrier between, but it's really a very natural setting where Jana's got her literacy footprints lesson card out. The kids have their noses in those high-interest books and this is really an instructional moment. So after a couple of months of school by January, teachers were conducting that next round of running records and other assessments to determine kids' independent reading levels and here's where we are. So this is now the 50,000-foot view. This is back to all students. And again, what we've done here is take the students for whom we have both October 2020 and January 2021 scores. So we're really looking at the progress of the same group of students. This is at all grade levels and I hope what you're noticing is that same 11% has now flipped into the positive side. We saw overall between October and January, an increase of proficiency across the board of 11%. So that is really, really heartening news. We have quite a ways to go yet, but we are very, very heartened that by maintaining our focus and really implementing our reopening plan, making sure that teachers had the ability to focus in those small-group pods, we've really seen some strong gains as represented there by that positive Delta overall of 11%. And there it is. So these are our regular benchmarks, I should say. We did not adjust our standards in any way for the pandemic. These are our regular independent reading level benchmarks. So we were very pleased to see that increase overall from October to January. So now we're going to disaggregate by race and look again at that same thing. What percent of students are now proficient in January who might not have been proficient in October? And so what we see here is among white students. So remember, we had an 11% overall increase. For white students, the increase, the delta, was 10%. So we have 10% more kids proficient now in January, white students, than we did in October. And for students of color, we have a 13% increase in proficiency. So those very students who we were most concerned about, based on the gap that I showed you in October, you know, again, a fairly long way to go yet, but we're very heartened by that 13% increase in proficiency among students of color. And there it is again. Here is the same measure now looking at poverty. So for students not in poverty, we saw an increase of 10% proficiency between October and January. And for our students in poverty, we see an increase in proficiency of 14%, very encouraging. We still are very concerned. If you look at the overall proficiency rate, if you go to that middle column, that January column, and you see we have 21% of our students in poverty above benchmark, 20% of our students in poverty at, so a total proficiency of 41%. So what that says to us is that fewer than half of our students in poverty are yet at mid-year hitting that benchmark. So a lot of urgency and work to be done, but we're very heartened by the increase from September to October. It says to us that our methodologies are sound and that we're seeing the progress that we need to see.
And Annie, just to be clear, that was about 65% of students of color are at or above proficiency.
That's correct. What Christian's referring to here, if we look at the bottom chart and again, that middle column, so we would add the 39% and the 26%.
And we're below 50% with students in poverty.
Correct. That's here. 41%.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot to absorb, so thank you for bearing with me. So now this is what I was mentioning earlier. It's important first to just understand the difference in pod composition when we disaggregate by socioeconomic status. So our hybrid pods have a poverty rate of 13%, which is lower than our overall district poverty rate of about 19%. Whereas our remote pods, as I said a moment ago, students in poverty are overrepresented. We have a poverty rate of 33% currently in our remote pods. So that's important to keep in mind when now we're going to disaggregate and look at progress by students in hybrid versus remote pods. And I want to remind, you know, the board and the community about the challenges. I showed you those pictures just so you get the visual of what it looks like to either conduct these assessments or lead guided reading groups in person in hybrid pods, but also the amount of tech wizardry that our teachers have developed and that our students and families have developed to participate in small-group targeted instruction through the screen. Since September has been nothing short of amazing. And actually, you're gonna see something very interesting in terms of the results that we see. So here now, we're disaggregating by learning model. So again, remember in your mind the overall benchmark that we've seen, an overall growth rate of 11%. We have 11% more kids overall proficient now. So what we see is that for students in hybrid pods who've been coming to school in person for half the day every day, we have a growth of 10%, so very near, slightly under, but right on about the average. And that makes sense because we have the majority of our students learning in hybrid pods. But look at this. And this was really fascinating. It was a surprise to me and we have a lot more work to do to really understand this in terms of the ability of our remote students and our remote teachers to really make this model work because we saw between October and January, an increase in proficiency among our remote students of 14%. And again, keeping in mind that those pods have an overrepresentation of kids living in poverty. And so there it is, just the summary. So I can add, I know the board may have questions about this and we're doing a lot more, we're digging deep into these data internally across the district by race, by socioeconomic status and learning model, as I just reported. Between 10 and 14% more students have reached or exceeded proficiency. So what's exciting about that is it seems that our students, no matter who they are and how they're learning, are making those gains. I can tell you that students with disabilities, Nora and I have looked at this with our literacy team, that our students with disabilities for whom we conduct these same assessments have about 9% more have achieved proficiency. And for our Ls, our English language learners, who are eligible for ENL services, 10% more have reached proficiency. So we're really very heartened by the gains that we've seen across a lot of different learning models and profiles. What I want to share with you now is a little twist on this. So this, what I've just finished with was raw proficiency, right? Who was proficient in October, who met or exceeded our benchmark, and then in January, who met or exceeded. What I'm sharing with you now is what we are really interested in, which is rate of growth, right? Rate of change. And so to illustrate what I'm about to show, this is sort of a schematic diagram. So the orange line here with those four dots, points represents our benchmarks, right? What is, what is the expected rate of growth from September to November to January and then to March? So that's, that would be following our benchmarks. What the black line is, is the trajectory of a sample student. So imagine this student shown on the black line, who came into school in September below benchmark. But now look at the slope of that black line. That reader is making accelerated progress. So that by November, he's fairly close to benchmark. And by January, he's actually exceeded the benchmark. And will continue to, if he, if he keeps on that trajectory, by June, or by March or June, he will finish, you know, above benchmark. So that's the ideal. That's the holy grail that we're looking for is kids that make not just linear gains. Because imagine this kid in September who started below benchmark. He could make the expected rate of growth, if that would show the black line being parallel to the orange line. And that would be good that he's making growth, but until and unless he makes accelerated growth, like you're seeing here, he's not going to catch up. He's not going to reach benchmark. So what I want to show you now are the numbers of students that are making those accelerated gains. So of, we had in October, we had 791 kids across all four elementary schools who were not yet at benchmark. So of those 791, we have 58% or 455 students who made accelerated gains. And 252 of whom, or 32% of the 791, actually reached or surpassed the benchmark. So we've had basically a third of our kids who entered school in September below benchmark have already reached or surpassed. They've already caught up at the mid-year point. So that is really cause for celebration, not just for those students who've, who've met with such, such gains, but also again, for our teachers who've been really figuring this out, figuring out how to make good on our plan, how to innovate, how to make sure that kids are well-connected with high-interest books, how to keep those texts coming home, whether they're physical books or electronic texts. And most of all, that targeted instruction that you've been hearing so much about. So that was really heartening. We had in, in October, 235 students in poverty, learning in hybrid pods. And of those kids, 34% more than a third made accelerated gains. And we had 109 students in poverty, learning in remote pods. And of those kids, 50% or 54 children made accelerated gains. Not all of them have caught up yet to reach benchmark, but that acceleration, remember that the black line that we saw, that's the path that these kids are on when we're talking about accelerated growth. And it's just phenomenal. And if you could watch, I know in some of the presentations, I've shown you a little clip of what that looks like. But if any of you are interested in seeing that, we could certainly have you make a visit to one of our remote pods, either by Zoom or in person, masked and, and watch this, because the concentration on the part of the teacher, the commitment on the part of the kids to stay focused is just absolutely breathtaking. And you can, you can see the results. So just as I closed with the teachers, I'll share a, a quote from a blog post that I read last spring, again, about reading in the pandemic. There's one of our students reading at home last spring in his fort in the backyard. Books are our best defense against fear and anxiety. Through reading, our children learn that the human spirit is strong and resilient, and the future is still bright with possibility. From a piece by Lois Bridges called "Just Read: Finding Solace and Strength in a Pandemic." So thank you for your interest in this, and we will look forward to continuing the conversation and hope to have even more heartening progress to report later this spring, or as, as we close out the year in June. But for now, we, we're just, again, want to really commend the teachers and the administrators. And I think that in our central office conversations, we've also recognized that when we talk about the team effort, it's so important to also include all of our student support services, related service providers, but also social workers, psychologists, really dealing with both the food security issues, ensuring that families are, are well-fed and that mental health needs are being met, because all of that adds up to kids coming to school in person or remotely, ready to learn and ready to read. So thank you.
Thank you, Annie. This is truly, you know, remarkable work on the part of, on the part of our teachers, on the part of our support staff. And I really appreciate all the disaggregation of the data. And I know that it go, it gets drilled down even further than this based on, you know, the, the data dashboard and the suite of, of information that you've shown us. You're really getting to see each and every learner, which, you know, is really helpful. And I just, you know, I want to suggest for the future, since, you know, nobody thinks that kids should attend school remotely for the rest of their top, for the rest of their time in our system. What are the, to perhaps have a meeting where we can talk about lessons learned and how we can take, can we can bring some of those best practices forward, you know, as we return children to school? Because clearly something we're doing is working very well. And I could tell by the way you even put forth this, this data, that it's surprising, that it's even surprising to everyone. And I, you know, I just kudos to, to all of the teachers and the students and families who have made this work. So thank you.
Thank you, Rena. Questions from any board members on this?
No, no questions here, but I just, just, just a quick comment. You know, I, when I started out on the board, we had started, there are stretch goals in terms of reading and literacy, voluminous reading. And the amount of work that was done pre-COVID, pre-pandemic was amazing enough as it is. But just to, you know, to, to top it off with, with during these unprecedented times, the amount of work and the results that we're seeing is just, it's truly a kudos. I can't add anything to what Rena said. I just want to say thank you, Annie, for leading the charge here. And thank you to all literacy and reading teachers. I think, to your point, there's always more work to be done, but the strides are there. Have obviously been made and we're getting there. So thank you. Much appreciated.
I want to echo that this is fantastic to see. It's pretty remarkable to see the growth in a year like this, where there's so many moving parts and so many kids learning in different and unique ways. Just a question, is there comparable data on math to be shared at a later point? Do we assess it similarly? I'm just curious sort of how that's being aggregated.
Sure, thanks. We absolutely are assessing in math. So we're using the mid and end module assessments in Engage New York as we would in a normal year. In addition to that, we do have electronic data through, through Zern at the, at, at the level of individual teachers, of course, have data on the progress of their own students. And then administrators were able to look at that at the system level. There isn't a, 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 a convenient way to really aggregate those data. We would need to, you know, the, the founders in Pennell, the independent reading levels are something that we, of course, have a history of assessing and collecting and aggregating long pre-COVID. So there would need to be some standard setting done in order to really collect data, particularly across multiple grade levels and analyze that. But I hope that at the, at conferences and of course, on the achievement reports, parents absolutely would have heard from their teachers in, in some granular detail about students' progress in math. Because that was, as you know, our other major area of focus for both in-person and remote pods. So more to come. And if the board has interest in that, that certainly is something that we could report out on. Not only are we teaching math every day, but also we're providing academic intervention services, again, remotely. I just, having seen so much of that work myself, the innovation there is no less, no less impressive. So if there's interest, we could certainly focus on that in a, in a future session.
Thanks. Yeah. And I, I think as we close out the year, it really would be helpful to, you know, to have an additional report on data to see how we're, how we're doing and to perhaps, you know, talk about, you know, what might happen over the summer with some students to make sure that they, you know, hold on to those, to, to some of those gains.
And I, and I would say, if I can just add to that, you know, through Annie's leadership, you know, we've been maintaining the summer slide initiative, the summer program that is part of the budget, which the board has supported and the community as well. And, you know, we have multiple years of data on students who've been going, a part, who've been a part of that intervention and the impact. And that's used to measure progress, especially from, you know, the June to the first assessment when students return the following fall. So, so there is a thread, a connection to the budget, to the resources we provide and interventions that really are 12 months relative to our program.
Thanks, Bob.
Just speaking to the very real deficits that we discussed earlier. The only way to really challenge those is reflecting back on the slope. And the slope is, is that, that's what's going to get our students back, back to where they need to be. And thank you to the teachers. Thank you to our students and families who are, who are supporting this movement to make sure that all of our students are being successful in the district. So big shout out to the slope. Just to that end, Bob, is there any, any news you can give on state assessments and where we are with that?
Yeah, I, I don't have an update on state assessments. I'd say about an hour ago, the Department of Education did update on the E S U requirements for region's exams. And so they, they have reduced the number to comply with the, the federal mandate to provide for state tests. I don't have further information, but we will share the information about those regions exams. For our students, it would be, I think, algebra for eighth and ninth graders and earth science for eighth graders. And then I think it's the English living environment exams at the high school as well. So, so more to come on that, but thank you. I, I didn't want to say one thing, if I could just add to the conversation. The, the amount of complexity around what teachers have, to have faced and their ability to adapt and to innovate, I, I think speaks volumes to, to the caliber and the quality of our, our teaching staff, administrators, our coaches and so on. But I also just want to point out that because it is essentially a, a year anniversary to, for the, the first case, the positive case in New York, that there were a number of initiatives through the spring that continued that we learned from and innovative practices about mailing home books to students to keep that focus on daily independent reading. And, and I think when we do have a chance to look back at the end of the year, it is really the, the, the the, the list of innovative practices that we have kind of implemented along the way that I think contribute to where we are today. And, and so I want to give credit to our literacy team, our teachers, our reading specialists, our librarians, all of which collectively have been focused. And it is a sense of coherence, this instructional coherence, saying this is what we're going to prioritize. This is what we're going to do. And it's been that relentless focus that I'm most proud of in terms of the system, knowing that we're already moving forward, trying to make up ground for all of our students and accelerate that progress.
And thanks for that, Bob. And, you know, Annie, I'm, I'm just reflecting back to what you just said about a shout out to our social workers and student support services. You know, there's so much work that gets done by our teachers and staff that is not spoken about publicly, where they really do go the extra mile, whether it be delivering books to a child's home or delivering games, just the caring, you know, going out of their way to really go the extra mile to meet the needs of kids. And, you know, those are things that they just do. They're not expected to do, and they just do it. So I just want to, you know, recognize all of that and let the community know that you really have some very special dedicated staff, especially during these times. So.
Absolutely, Rena. I, I actually got emotional in the session with teachers, because at the end, I was able to, we had a little more time, and I was able to share exactly what you're talking about, about just, and, and some of the really beautiful effects. So it is a year later. So I shared an example of a student who's now at Homics, but who had been, had a book matching experience with one of our elementary librarians from another school. So this was a person she had not, didn't have any prior connection with pre-COVID. So the librarian and the student figured out how to meet each other over Zoom, how to develop rapport, and then get out the, at the business of book matching. And so from Homics, the student reached out and sent an email back to the librarian this fall, kind of in an agentic way to say, hey, you know, am I getting more books? Like what's, what's up with the books? Like where are they? And it was great. You know, we loved it because not only did it speak to that relationship that you're, you're getting at, Rena, between classroom teachers and their kids, but also the whole constellation of professionals that are taking care of kids and each other during this challenging time. It really is inspiring. Watching the remote pod teachers, it is, I, I haven't actually seen the end of a remote pod lesson session where there hasn't been one or more kids who just want to stay on the call, because they just want to have a special extra moment with their teacher. They might want to show a stuffed animal or a pet, or just spend a little more time in the company of that beloved teacher. And sometimes these are kids that are lonely. You know, they may, they have supervision at home, but perhaps not the most stimulating. So for them, the specials, their interactions with their art, music and P E teacher and librarians, the A I S providers, E N L teachers, everyone. So we're, we definitely are, are finding these silver linings and already having those conversations about which of these practices, what have we learned that is transferable to, to the next phase? So, so thank you for the support from this board and, and from the community as well.
No, it's been, it's been really great. And it would be really good to hear about how some of those practices could, could be continued. Because as we said, you know, no one thinks that kids should continue to learn remotely indefinitely. So, but thank you for that. Okay.
I cannot pass on this one, because we always talk about regressions and sad news. But this one is definitely to see the oldest two of these American gains in this year. And such a difficult year, year is something to celebrate. So thank you to Annie and to the whole teachers to, to get us to this point. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Gladys. Okay, Bob, I'm going to turn it over to you. And I, I guess Sylvia might be speaking also to present the superintendent's recommended budget.
Can you hear me? I hope. Thank you. And this is a great transition, because I always say that the, the budget is a financial articulation of what we hope to accomplish, programs and, and provide. So this evening, it's my pleasure to, to present the superintendent's recommended 2021, 22 budget. I want to point out to the community that this is the first or the beginning point in the budget process that there are, are scheduled, a, a number of board meetings and other public conversations that community members, parents, teachers can give input and ask questions. This presentation, the, the first presentation is really an overview or a summary of the budget itself. And that in the ensuing weeks, we will dive into the details and speak to specific questions and provide a detailed information. I would be remiss if I didn't start this process by just acknowledging the, the work of our district administrators, our department chairs, teacher leaders, all helping to put together proposals for the budget, which I'm about to present to you this evening. So there's a lot here to start. This is, I said, that the, the beginning point. Where I'm going to provide an overview on March 16th, we'll really dive into the Where I'm going to provide an overview on March 16th, we'll really dive into the budget. We'll focus on instruction, on, on all aspects of the instructional components of the budget. On April 6th, we'll follow and continue the process. And as we always say to the board, if we need to add meetings or time to continue to deliberate, make recommendations, seek more information, we'll provide that prior to the April 20th date, which is the date to adopt the budget that we've put in the budget calendar and the property tax report card. And then really moving up to the May 18th, 2021 budget vote and trustee vote as well. So I, I want to start with just a general summary of the, the budget. The, I, I would say that in, in my 11 years of developing budgets, there, the, the overarching struggle in terms of the financial plan is that there are major cost drivers. In a few moments, we'll talk about salaries and benefits as being the largest components of the budget. But we, we as other school districts have really struggled in some ways to maintain, especially in a tax cap levy environment, annual increases to expenditures. And so the first headline or summary of this budget is for the first time, we see marginal increases to the major expenditure cost drivers. I, you know, I would say salaries, employee benefits, special education programs and services. And so through our collective success in, in decision making, through settling contracts, we've been able to in some ways slow down the, the annual growth of expenditures. The second summary or just important point to our community and parents as well is that this budget, the beginning point for this budget is to really ensure that we go back and include programs and student activities that reflect the pre-COVID-19 reductions of this fall. And so our starting point to develop the, the budget is to restore the programs, staffing and student activities that were adopted by our committee members through the, through passage of the budget in the 2021 budget in May. And then the, the other highlight, hi, excuse me, highlight to mention is that we have through a combination of slowing down expenditure growth, maintaining and investing, maintaining our programs and investing programs, been able to present a budget that has minimal budget to budget increase over the current budget, as well as tax levy increases. And we'll get into that deal details in a moment. However, the, the takeaway here for the board is that despite our efforts to slow down the growth of expenditures, to invest and maintain the quality of our programs, to meet the needs of staffing needs within this budget, we are unable to remain under the tax levy limit, the allowable growth levy by about $900,000. And so therefore we will, at this point, through this budget, be required to gain the support of 60% of our voters. And we'll talk about the rationale behind that. I think it goes back to the first point. And, and that is that we've been able to limit the growth of this budget and maintain the quality of the programs and staffing and broad or breadth of offerings for students and meet the needs of all students as well. And so that really is just a, this overarching summary of the budget I'm about to present. I want to talk about, as I mentioned in the first slide, just general assumptions about this budget and the budget development. One, we are optimistic and remain optimistic of building a budget for the full return of in-person learning. We recognize that in a sense of uncertainty where we are now in the pandemic, that we anticipate that school, the return of school, whether it's in, in the coming weeks or certainly planning for September, that will be guided by Department of Health, health and safety regulations of the adjustment to learning environment experience. And so it's, it's what, it's safe to say that we are optimistic and hope for a, a normal return or red return to full-time learning. And we need to anticipate and be prepared through this budget to, to, to make some shifts, just as we did in planning through the summer and responding to the need for expenditures for health and safety in this last fall. And so we know that through, through our own experience, that the hybrid remote model is probably the most costly and most expensive model. But we've built into this budget and feeling that we can adapt as well. As I mentioned, the programming of this budget includes levels based on the adopted 2021 budget prior to any board reductions, as well as new initiatives that we've included in our prioritizing. Similarly, the staffing levels will go back to where we were in May of 2020, as well as to providing for the staffing for extracurricular activities, the sports, the clubs, as well as new initiatives in 2122. So that is a huge headline for our stakeholders, because I know it's been a lot of interest as we've gone through this year. We will continue to build a budget that maintains class size averages that are favorable, historical in, as well as course offerings. And so in, in the, in the course of our discussions of the fall, there's conversations about, for example, the High School Pace Program, that returning that, that program based on enrollment to the staffing levels that has been historical. And so these are the kinds of, of staffing decisions that we've made to include in the budget. And finally, the revenue side, this budget provides for state aid based on the proposed executive budget. We recognize at this point in time, the budget has not been adopted by the state. There's a lot of possibilities relative to where we'll go for state aid. But a starting point for us is to use the proposed state aid runs and the executive budget. We'll talk about that as well. And as the board has questions, please, you know, I'll stop, but I hope to go through this and then provide time for specific questions. So I'm going to just talk about program goals for the budget. As I said, that the budget really is an articulation of what we hope to accomplish, what we hope to focus on. And I'd like just to highlight some of the, the, the primary program goals. In September, we hope to pilot the Bridges Math Elementary Math Curriculum, which is aligned to New York State Common Core Learning Standards and focus on grades K and 1. Prior to this year, we had the opportunity to introduce some of the Bridges Math and pilot that, and it was well received. And so we were going to advance that initiative. We have resources in budget to implement the District Equity Team's multi-year strategic plan, first-year initiatives. We wanted to make sure that as the board recently adopted the multi-year strategic plan, that we ensured that we had the resources that will advance the work that we've prioritized for our school system. Next year, we, we are excited that we will extend the Dos Caminos Dual Language Program into eighth grade. It will kind of mark a, a milestone where we will have a KH dual language, district dual language program for the first time. It speaks to the board's investment in dual language programs into bicultural, bicultural programs that really provide for and, and kind of accent the diversity of our families and our learners. And so we're quite proud of that. We will continue to advance the work of revising our science units, resources and professional development. Now four, based on the, the newly adopted National Science Standards and standards in New York State. So we'll continue with that multi-year effort. I, through the hard work of our district social workers, Dr. Mazzoni, our guidance counselors, we seek to pilot the HOMICS Learning Hub and before-after-school counseling groups to support the social, emotional, academic stability of students impacted by COVID health crisis. And we've talked a lot here publicly about the mental health needs of our students. So I, I certainly salute Dr. Mazzoni for working with middle school staff to develop this pilot program that we'll, you'll hear more about as we go through the budget process. We are planning to add to the, I'd say, rich array of course offerings in the area of K-12 music. Through the, certainly gift of the school foundation, provided a grant for drumming. We hope to introduce a, a middle school world drumming course for the first time at HOMICS, as well as expand our high school offerings with advanced placement music theory, which has really brought a lot of interest and attention from our students in the high school. So we'll add to the, the advanced placement course offerings at the high school, but also cement what I would say is an array of music experiences for our middle school learners as well. So we're very excited about that expansion. We will introduce through the, the work of, of Annie Ward and the high school administration and English department and department chair, expand and enrich our 11th and 12th grade English electives. We've had the opportunity beginning this year and through the summer to revise and expand these electives and make them available both to 11th and 12th grade students. Interesting, we are awaiting plan approval from the state education department to move forward with our Pathfinder projects as part of our capital plan. And in anticipation of the D, the MHS Design Lab project, as well as the culinary arts space, we are looking to enhance our high school STEM courses to support the, what soon to be, we hope, a design lab space as well as instructional program. So a lot of excitement to look forward in the planning process for those new instructional areas and the programs that, that the areas will support. In our most recent board meeting, with the opportunity to talk about the HOMICS schedule. And so working with the HOMICS administrative team and teachers, design school lunch activities program, the Intervention and Enrichment Advisory Block, and that's part of this, our focus. We are planning to spend really the summer and beyond at the high school to revise and review high school non-regional science course offerings, our electives, similar to what is underway in the English area of English. And we'll continue to really maintain our focus on sustainability issues, our green tigers, our programs, K through 12. And finally, I, I want to introduce a bold idea, something we've talked about for a while. I'm interested in, as part of this budget and just our focus for next year, to investigate a partnership with a farm collaborative to support what I would say is the, the array of authentic learning experiences that really are part of our mission, our philosophy. And so looking to create an outdoor educational space that for all grade levels, that would support STEM, sustainability, animal science, agricultural food science program, and outdoor education field experiences. So it is a aspirational goal, but I'm starting to, what I would say, put down some footing around exploring the opportunity of a farm location site that would be partnering with our school system. So a lot more to talk about. Dream big and see where we go. So I want to touch on before I get into the details of the budget, just ongoing efforts for cost efficiencies, for fiscal strategies, working with Assistant Superintendent for Business Operation, Sylvia Wallach. We are always looking to maximize efficiencies, especially in the areas of employee benefits and in other parts of our operations. Recently, we had joined the Regional Workers Compensation Consortium to really stabilize and address ongoing issues around worker comp claims and expenditures. A significant shift for us in the area of employee benefits. This year, we transitioned from a standalone self-insured health and employee health and prescription coverage plan to partner and join a regional municipal public school health benefits consortium, MEPCO. And we're hoping that that will provide stability and, and what I would say consistency around expenditure growth for our, our health and employee health and prescription program and provide some protection beyond in terms of year-to-year change in utilization that goes beyond just a standalone program. And so we're off to a good start. And I certainly want to thank Sylvia for all the work to make that happen. I mentioned in the beginning that part of our minimal increase in our salaries i- is really connected to settling all of our collective bargaining agreements for multi-year agreements in, in all, with all our units. This budget will be the first budget in a very long time where we are not relying on fund balance to reduce the tax levy and the, and, and add to revenue to fund the budget. So as, as many board members know, the community members know, for many years, there was conversations, concerns about the reliance and commitment to accumulate fund balance at a given year to earmark for the following year. So we've gone from $3 million when I first arrived, down to $400,000. And this will eliminate that practice and give us more, I, I would say, freedom to really expend our budgets as we create them. And not rely on reserves to, to kind of fill the gap if we fall short in terms of expenditures. And finally, Sylvia has committed to for several years now, the implementation of paperless and electronic systems. So we're always looking for efficiencies and connecting to long-term fiscal strategies. So let me summarize the budget that I present to the board and to the community. The recommended budget will be for $144,714,871. It represents a $2.1 million budget to budget increase over the current budget or a budget to budget percentage increase of 1.48%. This is in line with, I would say, many budgets over the past several years as part of the tax levy cap law in terms of minimizing the increase that's allowed. To support this budget, it will cause us to raise tax levy of $131,311,044 or a tax levy increase of $2.5 million, which translates to a 1.99%, less than 2% tax levy increase. Tax rate projected or estimated tax rate is, is $14.01. Increase per thousand rate of assessed value is .25 cents. And that projects to an estimated tax rate increase of 1.84%. And what that means to someone who is owner of an average assessed house in our community of 1.2 million, it's a $316 increase, estimated increase in taxes, which is about $27 per month over the course of 12 months. So this is just the summary of the budget and we'll get, now get into the specifics. As I typically start off the budget presentation, our budget really is guided by enrollment. Enrollment is connected to staffing. And as the board and the community knows, over the last decade, we've seen significant increases in our enrollment year to year as a pattern of, of enrollment growth. And I wanted to, to always talk about enrollment at the beginning because that influences our staffing and the ability to certainly support all of our programs. So the enrollment summary for this particular coming year is that we, for, for the second year in a row, seem to have a level of stability around our K-12 enrollment. Following, as I mentioned, multi-year of increases at all levels, there seems to be a level of consistency in the enrollment patterns. It may be caused by the pandemic in some ways, but certainly in the near term, we see stability at elementary, middle and high school levels. There is, as we've talked about several months ago, some uncertainty around potential enrollment surprises, specifically in kindergarten, early elementary grades, based on, I would say, decisions by parents to homeschool, to really consider options around schooling. And so we're waiting to see what unfolds in the registration process, but we are paying close attention to kindergarten registration and new registrations. The one I would say bottleneck or increase within the K-12 continuum is we anticipate incoming a large cohort graduating from elementary school. 471 students are anticipated to join the middle school, which, as we typically built our middle school programs on 400 student cohorts. This is another large cohort that is traveling through the system. This is just a quick look of kindergarten enrollment projections. As you can see in our modeling, for the last decade, we've had this sequencing of alternating increase in enrollment followed by decreasing enrollment. If you just look across the screen here, where we actually see the variation in variability in enrollment. For this September, we anticipate or we are planning for approximately 406 incoming kindergarten, which is pretty consistent for historically for the district. It's hard to understand what that may look like. It would represent an 8.3, in 8.3% increase in kindergarten enrollment over last year. As of today, we have 252 registered kindergarten students. So we still have a ways to go. I would say the 252 enrollment level at this point level at this point is consistent with prior years. So it's, at this point, we can't say whether we're off track relative to what we expect our projections to end up to be in enrollments, but we are on track at this point at 252 at this point.
Typical, as you do every year, Bob, you'll be reporting on what our numbers are as we go through meetings.
Absolutely. Just generally, looking at enrollment trends overall, as you can see, as I mentioned, stability, we anticipate, we jumped ahead, excuse me, K-12 enrollment will be relatively stable or flat. We anticipate just a slight increase in total enrollment, K through 12. At the elementary level, we see that we have just a slight drop. My slides are racing through, so I apologize. This is the K-5 enrollment, where we go from about 2,528 students to 2,476. Again, at this point, it's really early to say what our overall enrollment will be, K-5. We typically have anywhere from 150 to 200 students register of the summer. And so this is something that we'll be watching as we go along. At the middle school, we're on this upward trajectory, and that's primarily caused by that large incoming sixth-grade cohort where we'll be over or close to 1,300 students. I think it's important to note that back in 2010, I think we were at 1,000 students, you know, at HAMX, and now we're, you know, crossing the 1,300 student threshold. Similarly, at the high school, we'll be over, you know, pretty much, what I would say, stable enrollment, over 1,600 students. If you think of though, a decade ago, we were at 1,450 students, approximately. And so both at the secondary level, you've seen the impact of large cohorts go through the system. And I would say, Maronic High School is projected to be close to 1,800 students in two and three years. So it continues to plan forward as we, at least in some ways, take a deep breath and a pause around enrollment pressures. So just to go quickly through our elementary schools, middle and high school, as you can see here, what we take a look at and project for the number of sections at Central, we anticipate to expanding the total number of sections by one section based on enrollment projections, all of it contingent on the moving to four sections at kindergarten, as we project. At Chatsworth, relatively flat, again, we project to go down one section of grade K through five, from 30 to 29. At MAS, similarly, we stay the same based on the total number of sections at 31. And at Murray, we anticipate a reduction of one section. And that, you know, this is typical, where we see 151 fifth graders leaving Murray, followed by 114 students coming in. And so we're still tight in terms of space, but we believe we'll be able to accommodate all students. I wanted to just share with you because, you know, I think based on our neighborhood schools model, we talk about enrollment pressures. And if you take a look at this, it's just taking the projected enrollment, but it's also pairing it with the, what I would say, grade-level enrollment pressures. And so at Central, you can see that across the grades, in terms of the number of available seats pending incoming students, we seem to be fine based on what's possible. At Chatsworth, you see, for example, at second grade, we're right now anticipating to have zero available seats. And so this is where we start through the summer to start to watch registrations and they go through. And similarly, at MAS and the Murray, we have certain grade levels where we're going to carefully watch enrollment over the course between now and September. The point here is that if we start based on our projections, we'll have 297 total available seats across four elementary schools. But as you recognize, in some particular grades, we've, at this point, have run out of seats in sections based on enrollment. So that's just something to consider as we prepare for the fall. As I mentioned, at HAMX, we have the large sixth grade. We're going to have approximately 1,312 students. And then finally, this is the breakdown per our four grades in high school as well. So that's the enrollment story. Turning now to staffing, and staffing, I just want to give the board and community perspective on staffing change to enrollment and just total staffing, both certified and classified staff. As you can see, we have, as enrollment increased over, and we had growth in the total number of students over the last decade, we've responded. And certainly, the board and community have supported requests for additional staffing. The drop-off from 866.75 FTEs to 829 really reflects the reduction of teacher aides based on the change in number of aides that were required, certainly this year as well through the pandemic. If you break this out between certified and classified staff, you'll see that really since 2012, we've added about 47 certified staffing positions, primarily teaching positions. So as we had increased enrollment, we, through our annual budgets, add significant number of teaching staff. And as you can see here, we've had the adjustment in our certified staff, primarily reduction in total of number of teacher aides. So in this budget, we are recommending 3.4 staffing increase. This includes a district-wide music teacher. The music teacher will, 1.0 FTE, will really be considered a district-wide position as we consider moving Bill Dury back into his assignment at Pace Program. We are filling in at Central in terms of the partial FTEs of his position. As I mentioned, we are also adding the Advanced Place for Music Theory Course, as well as the World Drumming Course. In addition to that, I'm requesting release time, professional release time of 0.4, so a percentage of overall FTE, so that our equity team coordinator can focus on facilitating the strategic plan. And so the, it's a combination of the music is covering some of the release time and adding to based-on-course offerings in the reassignment of Mr. Derby to the Pace Program. At HAMX, based on increasing need of students eligible for AS services, we anticipate that need growing. And so we're requesting a 1.0 FTE AIS teacher and HAMX primarily, I believe, in the area of reading support. That's focused, based on eligible students. We've had a growing need and been watching the health needs of students at Amerenick Avenue School. Our Aunt Madeline Lucas is nothing short of phenomenal in terms of the care and the quality of nursing services she provides at MAS. However, we are requesting a 1.0 school nurse to support Madeline in the needs of students at Amerenick Avenue School. In total, this, it represents a 3.4 FTE increase in our staffing levels. I won't get into details, but this slide simply describes the reason, the rationale for our staffing requests and just summarizes the 3.4 FTE increase. Moving on to expenditures, I mentioned just at the beginning in summarizing the budget that in the general large expenditure categories, that we see a minimal increase in staff salaries, $379,000 increase over current expenditures, which is 0.49% in terms of increase, budget-to-budget increase of the current budget. Similarly, we've been able to slow down the increased costs of benefits. When we talk and break out the benefit categories, we'll talk about the areas of the benefits that really contribute to the $479,971 increase. I want to just mention, under the category of contractual costs, the $364,408,000, $408 budget-to-budget increase really reflects a significant increase to health services, to non-public health services, to other categories. Athletic Director Barry Sumon has requested adding a strength and conditioning coach as part of this budget for our student athletes. And that's built into this, in addition to a series of contractual increases in this budget. And so that is a significant increase in that category. Later on in the budget process, we'll take a deep dive into transportation, but the board understands that over the last several years, we've had significant increases in annual transportation costs. And then I would say that the $391,252 represents a significant increase over current transportation services costs as well. All of this adds up to, as I mentioned, a $2.1 million increase in expenditures for this budget or 1.48% of growth in budget-to-budget expenditures. We are required to report the budget through the state, three state categories of expenditures, general support is all non-instructural costs. As you can see here, when you look at this budget, there is about 10% of overall budget, or less than 10%, is assigned to non-instructural costs. And we'll go through in detail all the areas of that. Primarily, as I mentioned before, this budget is really organized or aligned with instructional program and staffing needs. And that's where you see the largest concentration of expenditures, both in instruction and employee benefits. This is just another way of looking at the budget. When it comes to employee benefits, the increase in the category is really attributed to increase in our contribution for the teacher's retirement system and the employee retirement system. That makes up $213,099,000 of the total $470,971 increase. Certainly, there's additional costs associated with social security contributions as well. But overall, as you can see, I think what is striking is that in the area of employee health insurance, essentially, there is no increase in the budget, which, for the first time in a long time, is certainly an exception to the rule. So the good news is we've been able to maintain stability around health insurance costs, employee benefits, but in tribute to the increase in benefits to the areas of teacher retirement system and, I would say, social security. So when you think about the components of the budget and what attributes to the overall growth, as I mentioned, in this particular case, we're increasing the budget from $142,697,92 to $144,714,871, which is a $2.1 million increase. Just as a reference point for the board, under the tax cap formula allowable growth, we would be able to standard the cap and grow this budget by $1.4 million. That would be equal to less than 1% budget-to-budget increase. And so in our decision-making process to support going over the allowable tax cap, it really is aligned with the decision to say, how do we maintain the breadth of programs, the staffing levels, and continue to invest in new programs to do that in a reasonable way? This just shows you in another way that benefits, transportation, and salaries really account for the most significant increase of that $2.1 million in growth. You know, people continue to reference what is really makes up the cost and represents the totality of the budget. As I've mentioned, we've said publicly, salaries and benefits make up a little bit over 80% of all expenditures in this budget, as you can see through this graph. So I'm going to turn things over at this point. Unless there are any specific questions, we'll come back to it to Sylvia, who's going to walk the, certainly you, through the revenue summary and talk about various aspects of revenue and take you through the tax cap formula that really is the starting point for understanding how this budget is able to grow and the restrictions around our ability to grow the tax levy. So Sylvia?
Good evening, everybody. So I'm looking at this revenue summary sheet, and the first line on it is the property taxes. The property taxes, as Dr. Shapps has explained, are recommended to go up 1.99%. The state aid numbers that we are using are based, well, the comparison is based on the 2021 budget, not what we expect to receive during 2021. So this increase recognizes and reflects a $295,000 increase over the 2021 original budget. And that's a 3.86% increase. The sales tax, we are expecting to remain flat for next year. And the health services are to decrease slightly. The other includes tuition, Medicaid miscellaneous revenues, and other revenues not specifically identified. We are hoping that we can resume facilities use and that the facilities use fees will be as they once were. So we are recognizing a slight decrease in that of 2.5%. But that is just based on what we expect would have been in a normal year. And the interest in earnings, I'm sure, as you know, on your personal lives have plummeted. The interest rates are very, very low. The expectation is that that is going to decrease by about 74%. That is, that's actually even above where we are this year. You can see we're projecting $85,000 compared to budget of $480,000. And tuition will remain relatively flat, as will the Medicare Part D reimbursement and refund of prior year's expense. And as Dr. Shapps explained, this recommended budget completes the district's elimination of its reliance on fund balance as a source of revenue to balance the budget. And that is the budget total of $144,714,871, or 1.48% increase over the current year's budget.
Sylvia, if we go back to something that you said about the state aid number, you would said, you would said on the recommended budget that it's comparing it to the recommended budget, which was the amount that we expected, but we have not yet received that because there were reductions in that amount that the governor's executive budget contained a provision where we get those funds back, the funds that were withheld, correct?
The, I'm not sure what you're asking me, Rena, I'm sorry. But the 7,654,000 is what we had in the 2021 budget. And we do not know if we're going to get those funds. To date, we have gotten about 5.8 of that money, but some of that we should not have received yet. About half of it, under normal conditions, we would not have received yet. So right now, we're short about $1 million. Whether or not we're going to get that, we really don't know. They definitely have released some small types of aid, but the significant amounts have not been restored to date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Sylvia, just to be clear, so the $295,000, though, is an increase over what we were expected to get from state aid, not from the amount that, not from the, because 20% was withheld, correct? So it's the total amount over, correct? Just to be clear.
Yeah, so that 7,654,000 is what we had in the budget before the pandemic became a reality.
Right, okay, good, perfect, thank you.
Oh, the state aid again, I should have switched to this slide to show you. So this is what was budgeted, that's $7.65 million. We expect to receive anywhere from $6.39 to $7.65 million. Hopefully, we will know that sooner rather than later. The projected state aid in the governor's proposal is $7,950,314. And that is the amount that has nothing to do with STAR, which we'll get to in a minute, which represents a $295,000 increase or 3.86%.
And Sylvia, just to be clear, so that's the budget that is in discussion and needs to get approved by Albany in whatever timeframe they're going to, hopefully they'll do it on time. But that $795 is based on what's penciled in currently for school aid?
That is in the governor's proposal. And then in March, there'll be a legislative proposal. And hopefully, by the end of March, a budget that has been passed.
Thanks.
I have my pictures off because I can't see the screen if I don't. So I, I don't see who's talking. But, um, so this is just a chart showing the makeup of our revenues in the district, being property taxes, including STAR, being 90.7%, the state aid being five and a half, and the other things like sales tax, tuition, interest, Medicare, Medicaid, making up 3.8%. So the tax levy cap, which has been around for about 10 years now, this is a calculation that we go through each year. And once all of the factors in it are set, it doesn't really change throughout the budget process. So we start out the calculation with our 2021 tax levy of $128,749,800. Our tax-based growth factor, which is a number that is provided by the state to us, is 1.0005. That gives us an additional tax amount with a total of $128,813,455. Payments in lieu of taxes are considered taxes by the states. So that actually is considered an additional levy, taking us to $128,859,815. We subtract from that the capital tax levy, which are the amounts that we pay for debt service on capital projects less or, and energy performance contracts, less the building aid that we receive. So our capital tax levy for 2021 was $4.8 million. We then apply the lesser of 2% or CPI to that number, to the 124 million number. And that is the increase that we are allowed. It takes us to $125,575,011. And then we have to subtract the payments in lieu of taxes because again, that's considered part of our, somewhat part of our tax levy to give us a current year tax levy limit of $125,527,492. We can then add back the ensuing year's capital tax levy that we anticipate, which is the debt service that we are projecting to be paid in '21, '22, less any building aid we might receive of $4.899 million. Gives us an allowable tax levy under the cap at $130,426,953. That would be an increase over the current year tax levy of $1,677,873 or a tax levy increase of 1.3%. As we have shown you, the tax levy that is in the recommended budget is $2,561,964 over the current year tax levy or 1.99% increase. So just to kind of summarize all the numbers Dr. Shapps shared with you, the 2021, 2022 recommended budget is $144,714,871. Of that budget, we project that we will receive $13.4 million in other revenues, things like state aid, tuition, interest, sales tax. That means that we have to collect $131,311,044 in taxes. When we want to calculate the tax rate, we divide that number by the current taxable assessments, which is that $9.3 billion, and multiply it by 1,000 to get a tax rate per thousand of assessed value of $14.01. That is a projected increase of 25 cents per thousand of assessed value or 1.84% and an increase on a home with a value of $1,250,000 of $316 per year. Again, these are projected as the assessments can change up until the tax levy. The tax levy growth, just, this is just a chart of the district's history with tax levy growth, showing that over the past 12 years, the increase in total has been 18.91% or an average annual increase in the overall tax levy of 1.58%. This is a similar graph showing the tax levy per pupil. And over the same 12-year period, there's been an increase of 9.43% as the enrollment has increased at a faster rate than the tax levy or an average annual increase in the tax levy per pupil of 0.79%. This chart, this chart shows a per pupil expenditure by district. And as you can see, out of 45 districts, the Marineric is 43. And that goes from highest to lowest. So with a $24,295 per pupil expenditure in the 1920 school year. So the STAR, I'll, I'll go through this quickly and then, and not quickly, but then explain to you what, how this has been kind of immersed in the governor's budget. But the tax levy for 2021 is $128,749,000. Of that, the STAR reimbursement from the state, the school tax relief, was $3,780,000. So the district really only collected $124,896,000 in taxes because the town sends out bills for our levy, less the STAR. For the 2021, 2022 school year, the tax levy recommended is $131,311,044. The estimated STAR on that is $3,380,000, which would require an estimated tax collection of $127,930. As you can see, the tag, the STAR goes down. It's been going down each year for many years. It's actually projected next year to be less than half of what it was several years ago. But in the governor's budget proposal, he's included a reduction in STAR that rather than, than reduce the savings to taxpayers, would only reduce what the school districts receive. So at this time, this change is not reflected in our revenue budget. However, should this change be reflected in the final state budget, the district's budget will have to be adjusted. So it is the thinking among many that this change is not going to happen and therefore, we haven't put it in our budget that way. But if it does, you know, by the final budget, we will have to make a change to the state aid revenue.
Here, what's happened in the governor's budget is that he's included STAR for the first time in the state aid runs, which are included. And to make up for that money, because the school district would then have to make it up, not the state, he's used the federal funds to, in essence, plug that very large hole.
Yes, right, Rena. And when we talk about state aid in detail in the coming weeks, there is a very large concern because he's using federal funds to make the districts whole in, with the plan to do that in '21, '22. So the concern is, what's going to happen when those federal funds go away and are not available for '22, '23? The true value tax rate is the tax rate per thousand of assessed value. But true value means that all of these districts, even if they have equalization rates lower than 100%, this is the rate their tax rate would be if they're, when their assessments are brought up to 100% of value. And as you can see, you know, the districts of ranking of 46, Mamaronek is 42nd. And that's pretty low compared to the others in the area. And just to kind of recap the budget statistic, Bob, do you want to do that?
Yeah, so thank you for the, just to focus on revenue. Just to recap, the recommended budget that I'm presenting to the board and to community is for $144,714,871. Represents a $2.1 million increase, budget to budget, or 1.48%. The tax levy required, as I said at the beginning, $131,311,044 reflects the tax levy increase of 0.199%, less than 2%. This will, again, require a 60% voter support for the passes of the budget. I think, you know, the storyline for this particular recommended budget is we've been able to maintain the quality of programs and invest in new programs, maintain the staffing levels that, for the programs, slow down expenditure costs and have the minimal increase in budget over the current budget, as well as bring the tax levy increase down below 2%. As Sylvia talked about the, the impact in multi-year budgeting, in our consideration, we would need to reduce this budget by approximately $900,000. The board would, would have to support that to get under the allowable tax levy limit. Or, and/or certainly in combination of revenue increases with this, the combined level of reductions. The $900,000 lowers are based for future years. There is concern of the ability to grow the budget in two years based on, you know, the federal funds going away as well. And so we are obviously focused on the current upcoming school year. But in our budgeting, we need to consider building the base that will allow us to continue to grow as we anticipate. We will increase the size of our district and our ability to grow the budget year to year will be that much difficult based on our, our, our base for future years. And so that, that really is a summary of our budget presentation. I, I think it's important to point out that over the next, the course of, obviously, the next two board meetings, we're really going to kind of delve into the details of the budget, both on the expenditure side and revenue. It would be important, certainly be able to respond to board members' questions about what's presented this evening, but also get some direction from board members on the areas of focus, that what you'd like to know. Have us prepare as we unpack the budget and speak to the details in each category of expenditures in programs and staffing. I think it's important. I also just want to go back to the beginning to point out that this budget, the starting point for this budget was to restore programs and activities and services and staffing that was approved in May of 2020, prior to our discussion about reductions in the budget based on the shortfall in revenue and concerns about full state aid. So, so that's where we're at at this point. And so thank you, Sylvia, for support and presentation and like to go to questions by the board and certainly to the community.
Thank you, Bob and Sylvia. I, I'm just going to start off here. There was a lot of information presented here tonight. So, you know, in order to really ask, you know, thoughtful questions, I think what would be helpful is to go through some of the, I'm just looking at the schedule of other meetings that we have, and maybe talk a little bit, Bob, if you could, how this could be broken down further when it's presented to the board and the community, similar to what we've done in prior years. Because asking questions on such a large presentation, I know for, you know, the board may be difficult, but certainly for the community. And on that, I also want to point out just to the community that there are a number of meetings in addition to the ones that Bob, that Dr. Shapps posted on the PowerPoint. And I have to thank PT Council for this and also Sylvia for your time. I know you did a Budget 101. And now on March 18th, there's going to be a School Budget 201, which will further help the community, you know, unpack this budget together with building with elementary, middle school and high school level meetings, where there'll also be opportunities. Those are not board meetings, but there'll also be opportunities for community members to, to ask questions. So Dr. Shapps, you want to speak to generally how this budget has been broken down in future?
I mean, generally, following the, what I would say, general overview and presentation summary, the, the recommended budget, the next board session or session number two will focus on instruction. So programs, you know, services in terms of student support services, student activities, all that is, I would say, included in the, the instructional category of the budget. That's typically a starting point because that really represents the largest portion of the budget. And so I, I think it would be helpful to hear from board members as to maybe just areas of focus, certainly between now and our next presentation, so we can. But we, we expect to summarize, you know, and really go into detail in all the components. Really, what I would say that's represented in the budget book. And Sylvia, maybe you want to just add to that as well? You know, technology and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. I would just say for the 20th, we should definitely save time for revenue because hopefully by then we'll know what the state aid is. So I think that that's a good holding spot for that topic. But certainly, transportation, we're, we're, you know, we're working on transportation. We're trying to figure out what we're going to do for next year. And so maybe we want to save that for April 20th as well because that'll give us more time to get there.
So, so again, I, I mean, historically, we've, we followed up the, the, the just overview of the budget with details on the instructional component of the budget in all activities relating to regular school, special instruction as a starting point, and student activities. Followed by, I would say, typically, technology, focus on plant operations and so on, transportation categories outside the instruction.
Thank you. I think what, what might also, go ahead Sylvia.
No, I just wanted to point out that the budget book is posted online. I believe Debbie posted it earlier this afternoon. So if anybody, you know, wants to have a more detailed look, that's where that is.
And similar to what we've done in the past, there'll be a, an email to the community with a summary of some of what was presented tonight together with a link to the budget book, so people won't have to hunt for it. And the other thing that I think might be helpful, because I know questions pop up as people review the budget book, I know they certainly do when I read, read through the budget book, is to perhaps have some sort of a link with a Google Doc that people can put in their questions. So then we can look at those and think about those and address them at future meetings. Or also address them in prior years. We've also developed FAQs.
Correct.
So we can do that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think well in advance of our next board meeting and budget presentation, we'll frame the areas of the budget that we're going to discuss and unpack. I would say that it would make sense for board members to provide any particular direction around areas that you'd like to take a deep focus, as well as information that would support that conversation. And then just be attuned to questions of the community that would also really be timely relative to our conversations. And so we can really address questions as we go along. And then certainly, we'll make those responses to questions public. So there is an ongoing dialogue with the community.
Thank you.
Any, any immediate reactions, questions from board members at this point?
Hey, Bob, I know you had mentioned several times the phrase, "programs and activities pre-COVID." And I think that there's so much packed in that nicely wrapped phrase that I'm hoping you could really share out to the community, what that is, because it's a lot. And then that was followed up by a slide that also showed other initiatives that's included in the budget. So I don't want it to be confused that there's a lot in that programs and activities prior to COVID.
I think an example is that we had to make hard decisions based on questions about revenue, multiple revenue categories. So I'd give you an example. In some cases, the, the, you know, to set aside modified sports, that was something that was in combination of a state decision to eliminate modified sports statewide, which would be coming back. I, I mentioned the PACE program that came up in discussions of our, our high school electives programs. So there's a case where we're restoring full staffing to PACE, athletics, all the things. Then, you know, as you alluded to, additional initiatives and whether it's, you know, new proposals and pilots for educational experiences. So we'll discuss that in detail. We'll share examples where in the fall, we made tough decisions and now what has been restored to the level of the adopted budget in May. So thank you for that. I just want to add some of the, the I just want to add some of the, I'm sorry, Rob, before you you step in. You know, a perfect example is field trips. Obviously, in in COVID, we 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 suspended any field trip experiences. And so that would be an example of reverting back to funding for field trip experiences in the schools that would be reestablished in this budget.
Right. And the idea is similar to what was discussed with the prior budget of budgeting for what we're hoping we'll get in terms of revenue. Because if you ratchet back based on assumptions of not getting revenue, we can't move the budget up in the middle of the year, right?
That is correct.
I mean, because the the revenue stuff makes, you know, it's a little, that seems to be the area, at least gives me pause, just seeing what the governor is saying is going to happen and.
I would say, Rob, if I could just say, obviously, we've had conversations and Rena mentioned ongoing conversations with Senator Shelley Mayer and Senator Steve Otis. They are certainly advancing initiatives at state level to provide for the funding that school districts need on the revenue side and in terms of state aid. Obviously, this week, if they, you know, the federal, the Senate is debating the COVID relief package, that will have a huge bearing. So as Sylvia suggested, over the course of the next month or so, we'll have more information as we really look carefully at the expenditure side of the budget and the programs that we're recommending and staffing. And in time with some final decisions about revenue, that will be timely before the board adopts the budget.
And Bob, just to set a little more context, when was the last time we went over the cap?
I believe it was three years ago, two years ago. And and I think what's different in this particular case is that, as I said in the beginning, we're presenting a budget that is less than 1.5% budget to budget increase and certainly well below 2%, who are right in line. And and really, I think my frustrations at this point is that, you know, we've done everything to slow down and maintain, I would say, expenditure growth. Yet the arbitrary nature of the tax cap formula makes it difficult for us to be able to get under the cap. Essentially, we're asking to approve a budget that would find $900,000 in in reductions in expenditures and and barely grow this budget over the current budget. It it's almost at a level of a contingent budget. We're just taking a current budget and advancing forward. So we've done the work of the long-term management, fiscal management, invested wisely in programs and staffing, and yet this arbitrary tax cap formula says that this is how much we can grow.
In fact, what districts have asked for this year from the legislators and which we're not optimistic is going to happen is to have the legislature just say, listen, it's it's 2%. We have a 2% tax cap and not this lower of CPI or 2%. Because most of the state thinks it's 2% anyway. But I don't think that's going to happen. Many districts are in a similar position to to the position that we're in. I guess Sylvia, you know, the one thing when we talk about, when we talk about reserves and not relying on fund balance, I think in the future, as we discuss that, it would be helpful to explain that a bit more as to the reasons why that's, we have not done that and to the shift in the district of, which has now been for a number of years, of budgeting closer to actuals and not socking money money away in in some reserve beyond what, you know, we really feel puts us in good financial shape. So that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think when we we talk about, you know, in further discussion, Sylvia will just go through fund balance, our reserve positions, the pressures that we, the long-term financial stress that we have relative to, you know, tax surcharges and in in all aspects that really tie into fund balance.
And we're also going to unpack student support services during this process.
That was actually my next question, yeah.
I mean, we, as you know, we go through every aspect of the instructional program, including in great detail, all components of student support services and mandated programs. You know, built into this budget, I'm glad you mentioned that, is, you know, is the requirement of fully funding mandated programs and services. And there's an array of programs and mandates that we need to comply with that goes into building this budget. It's something that we just can't say we're not going to fund.
And one more comment, Bob. I know you mentioned this about the lowering of the baseline. Should we approve a lower dollar amount? That that, you know, that you'd mentioned the hamstringing of future budgets and the future opportunities within the district. So I think that that's an important aspect that we have to reiterate. That, you know, the lower that budget, the lower the baseline moving forward and how that could impact budgets. And I know you've been very good about multi-year budgeting, both Sylvia and Bob. So it's important that the community knows that.
And we we did, and Sylvia alluded to the fact that it's always over a decade of of working under the tax cap levy law. You know, we we pointed out to the community in the first few years, we're based on the allowable limit. We couldn't fully, you know, certainly realize the the base in terms of building and how much that impacted us over multiple years relative to the growth of the budget and what what we experienced in the beginning years of the tax law.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions? I'm sure as we digest this a bit, we'll have questions between now and our next board meeting. But anything for for now?
I'm going to reserve further questions for the for our next meeting.
Okay, I guess with that, I am going to turn to the public participation at board meetings and open up for questions. Similar, what we do at each meeting is read our Board Policy 1230. Anyone who wishes to speak, please state your name and address and any organization there you're representing. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Members of the public are asked to keep their remarks to three minutes in order to ensure opportunity for others to speak and to facilitate an efficient meeting. The board will not allow in per public session comments involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and or concerns to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a respectful and civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence and statements advocating racial, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Questions concerning matters which are not on the agenda may be taken under consideration and addressed at a subsequent board meeting. We will try to be, we we will try to respond to questions that could be responded to very briefly or direct you where you can find the information. Otherwise, we will follow up at a subsequent meeting or in subsequent communication. The board vests and its president or other presiding officer the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual when that individual does not adhere to established rules. I will say that what I've done is give individuals a warning and if they do not adhere, then we asked Debbie to cut off their their comments. With that, I'll open it up for questions and comments. And Debbie, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with a question from Sally Cantwell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hi, thank you very much, Dr. Shapps and Sylvia, for putting the presentation together. I had three questions to ask you. One, I think the idea of a Google Doc to collect all the data or the questions is very helpful because then you can hear what people have got to say visually. Secondly, if it was possible, could we take the goals that you've outlined, Dr. Shapps, and actually attach the costs that are that go with that? So that people can see what the, what your goals are potentially going to go into cost. And then thirdly, we don't see anywhere in the presentation how much COVID has cost us. And I think for the community, it's very important to understand how much COVID has cost now and what it's going to cost in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Okay, no other questions yet. Let's see, actually, now, Indrine Smith has a question.
Good evening. You mentioned in the presentation that dos cominos is going to be.
Did we lose Andrean or she just hit the mute button? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I was asking about the dos cominos program and the extension to the eighth grade. So now that's going to be carrying all the way through the middle school. I'm wondering whether or not that will ultimately require an expansion of staff or resources to accommodate that program in the middle school.
And you want to answer that question? I I believe it's it's.
Well, we can unpack that during the the program section. Would that be a better time to do that?
That's fine.
Okay. And just quickly, are you guys taking questions on the previous presentation?
On the reading data?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I was just wondering whether or not that information would be disaggregated by schools as well?
We've certainly done that internally. We have not necessarily reported out on that on the data dashboard, but often there are presentations made at the building level that look specifically at the data school by school. So if there's interest in that, we can certainly do that. We, you know, we have the information for sure and look at it that way internally. So if there's interest, we can arrange follow-up presentation.
I would certainly hope to see that by school. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrean. Now we have a question from Jackie Emmett.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay, I just have a sort of a little bit of a piggyback on Sally's question on sort of the COVID expenses. I just want to make sure that we kind of have that in the back of our mind kind of prepared. I don't want to be in a situation that we were in in August where we all of a sudden realized we had a lot more expenses. And I'd like to just make sure that we, you know, plan to, if in the case that were to happen, let's say we we had, you know, additional remote students or there was some different scenario we we didn't plan for, that that money could come from our unassigned fund balance so that we wouldn't be dipping into extracurricular sports and all of those other activities that are student programs. So that's just something important for me. And then the other thing I just want to clarify or make sure I'm clear on, this year, the state aid that when they finalize the state aid number, that is a, that will be final, right? Like, they're not going to be able to do what they did this year and say, oh, maybe mid-year, we might cut more. Is that correct? Or is that never correct? I don't know.
They don't usually make mid-year cuts. They have, they have done it in the past, but it hasn't been for many, many years. So it is not something that commonly occurs.
And I believe they just took away the governor's special executive powers related to COVID. So that would have to go through the legislature now, right, Sylvia?
Yeah, it would have to go through a process, a legal process. They couldn't just, you know, say that's it. But that hasn't happened, I think, in about at least 10 years. I'm trying to remember what year it was, but it has not happened in many years. So it's not something we even before COVID would have even thought about happening again.
Right, that's what I thought. That's why I was just making sure that that was going to be the case for this year. Okay, great. And then one last thing. I know in the past, we used to have something called contingency teachers in case of enrollment changes. And I was wondering if we have that again this year.
So we built, if I can just say, we we built the number of elementary sections based on 116 sections with one contingency positions. We've reduced the contingency positions over the last several years, primarily because we've been fairly accurate in predicting the total number of sections and the way we look at this on a week-to-week basis. But there is one contingency position in the budget right now. Historically, we've had anywhere from one to three positions added to the budget.
And that would also be helpful in a in a subsequent meeting to unpack class sections, number of class sections and the number of personnel. So that also will be further detail in a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Jackie. We'll wait another few seconds here and see if anybody else has questions. Okay.
There are two questions in the chat.
Rosa just raised her hand.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question for Annie about the reading data. A couple of questions. First, I was just wondering if we're going to do an assessment for the middle school that's similar to this?
Yeah, we do not use the, we have the opportunity to use the Fonda-Sinfinell Benchmark Assessment System at the middle school, but we do not use it as a universal screening tool. We do not routinely assess the reading levels of all students at HOMICS. But certainly, our literacy specialists do take note of independent reading levels for kids that we judge to be, you know, not yet at benchmark. There was actually a full round of diagnostic conferences that were done, as well as an on-demand writing sample. I think those of you who saw the, or you could go back and watch the December, I think the December 15th, it was a mid-December Board of Education Study Session where we reported out on the fall assessment data. Chris, and there was a lot of information there about both literacy and math assessments at HOMICS, if you're interested in looking back at that.
Yep, okay, I saw that. Also, I was just wondering, I was trying to, this is going to be posted, I assume, online, the reading data assessments? I was trying to take some pictures of slides so I could ask some questions. I saw there was a slide that compared October 19 to October 20, and then we talked about growths between October and January 21. And I was wondering if we could see a slide that sort of compares October, October 19, October 20 and October 21 to kind of get a sense for how those line up?
I'm sorry, you mean October, could you say that again?
Or I'm sorry, January. So it was October, the first couple of slides were comparing October's year to year.
I see. So to compare the mid-year results now to mid-year results last year?
Right.
Yeah, we could certainly, we can certainly do that.
Okay, that would be great. And my last question was just on that slide that said accelerated reading growth. And it said that there was a, you know, the differential between the expected and the actual. I don't, I don't see a quantity on the Y axis, so I wasn't sure how much of a difference that is. So I was wondering if you could clarify that.
Sure. So that was just a schematic to illustrate the concept. So the way we report, the way the way we look at that, and we actually have in our database that teachers have access to, we have it programmed so that when teachers enter a child's reading level, let's say the January reading level, it it actually color codes itself to indicate whether kids are, if kids are making accelerated growth or if kids are more concerningly experiencing slide. Because that phenomenon is often invisible to a teacher. So if I assess a child in October and I assess him at a certain level and now it's January and he is one or more levels higher than that, I'm happy with that, of course, and I might be satisfied with that. Unless I had a means of understanding that if that child was below benchmark and made one level of gain, if the expected gains were to make two levels of growth, then although that child made gains, he actually was sliding relative to that benchmark. So the color, the the graph that I showed with just the orange and the black line was just a schematic. Because what the grade level benchmarks are, of course, vary from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth for each grade. And also, the benchmarks vary from September to November, January, March, June. So it's really, you know, what what the slope of that line is, the expected growth for each grade level is different. And then we plot students' pathway adjacent to that in the same way we did with the with the orange and the and the black. So we're, and then what what we look at is if a child has made linear growth, then we refer to that as, you know, zero, that that he's made, you know, the expected rate of growth. If a child has made accelerated growth by by one benchmark level. If a child has made accelerated growth by, by one benchmark level, we would refer to that with a plus one, or if a child has slid by one, by minus one. So we, we have a way of tracking that internally, which I can certainly share more information on if there's interest. I actually had an opportunity with our literacy team to conduct a session for the board, I think a work session last month, and would be very happy to make something like that more public if there's interest in understanding. Because I think it's one of the things that we do in Mamaroneck that is, is a little bit different. Of course, we track the static levels and the proficiency levels. But, but looking at rate of growth is a very helpful way for teachers to understand the impact of the work that they're doing day to day with students. And it's not something, as I said, that's often visible unless you actually develop a tool that helps teachers see it readily.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Sally Cantwell has another question.
Just, just, just not to, is there anyone else in the chat who hasn't already asked a question?
There are no others.
Okay, go ahead, Sally.
Oh, thanks, Rena. I just wanted to go back to the original presentation. And I, I'm sure we don't have the answers right now. But I do think that due to the slide, then there might be, you might be working on sort of summer plans for the regular and the special ed students outside of STEM to make sure that when they come back in September, you know, they're not going to be hitting the ground running, but they may be a little bit more forward. And it would be great at some point, if you could, if you could share the plans that you might, you know, that the district might be working on, Annie and Dr. Shapps. And then I think some point it would be useful just to understand or to share with, with parents how we benchmark with the other districts. Because I think that's, you know, we always seem to want to benchmark and it would just be a good thing to just understand where we are at. And because I think we're doing a tremendous job, but it would be good to sort of verify that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally. And that is it for tonight.
Okay. I'm going to move on to reading some legally required notices, which I know are riveting and everybody's on the edge of their seat. So here are the requirements for the budget and budget and board and election of trustees. In order to vote on the budget and election of school board trustees on Tuesday, May 18, 2021, it is necessary to be registered. Anyone registered for the general election is eligible to vote. For those who are not already registered, school voter registration day will be held on Wednesday, May 12, in the district clerk's office from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Mamaroneck High School or any school day with the district clerk at Mamaroneck High School. The last day to register is Thursday, May 13 by 4:00 p.m. in the district clerk's office. Applications for absentee ballots are available from the district clerk in schools and from the website. Ballot applications must be received by the district clerk no earlier than 30 days before the vote. And that is a change from prior years. Absentee ballots are due in the office of the district clerk by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, May 18. For details or questions, please contact the district clerk, Joanne Rice, at 914-220-3007, or visit the district website. And this information will also be posted in future communications from the board. And also, I would imagine from the PTAs. Transportation announcement. Residents of.
Rena.
Yeah.
Sorry, is there any plans to, I can't imagine we want a lot of people coming into the building to go to the district clerk's office. Is there any plans for another way for people to access registering?
Sam, I'm going to interrupt. They can call me at any time. They can make an appointment with me. I can meet them at the front security desk or meet them outside the auditorium steps. So I will make it as easy as possible for them.
Thank you.
Rena, there was a question, there was a question regarding clarification about, is it May 12 or 13th is the deadline? It's May 13th, okay. Thank you.
We have registration day that starts at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, the 12th. But the last day they can register is the 13th by four o'clock.
Great. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, transportation announcement. Residents of the Maroneck Union Free School District that wish to request transportation for school-aged children to private and parochial schools must submit their request to transportation at ardleyschools.org by 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 1st. The form is available on the district website. To access the form, click transportation link under the community tab and look for the application link for 2022. To be eligible for transportation, K through 8th grade students must live more than two and less than 15 miles from the school. 9th through 12th grade students must live more than three and less than 15 miles from the school. New students moving into the school district after April 1, 2021 must apply for transportation within 30 days of establishing residency in the district. Parents who are even just considering sending their child to non-public school should submit an application for every school that they may be considering. All eight applications will be denied. Upcoming meetings. Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, March 16, 7:00 p.m., Board of Education meeting. Topic, discussion of budget. Tuesday, April 6, 7:00 p.m., Board of Education study session. Topic is the budget discussion. Tuesday, April 20, Board of Education meeting, Board adoption of the budget. Meetings will be held remotely if Governor Cuomo does not extend his executive order 20272. The meetings will be held in either the Tiered Classroom or McLean Auditorium at Mamaroneck High School. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Rob.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you, LMC. Thank you, Debbie, and thank you, Joanne, for all of the information on budget votes.
We're all in favor.
All in favor of adjourning, yes. All in favor.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Very much.